June 5, 2023, 6:30 PM. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Surely you have a chance to take a role?
I have taken a role. Everybody is present but David Lehman, and he is attending by Zoom.
Great.
And he does need to turn his camera on. If he didn't have it on, or he can't vote.
Is he on? Alderman Lehman, if you're connected via Zoom, I need to be able to see your face to be able to record your vote for the meeting. If you could turn on a camera, please.
The computer says it doesn't recognize the camera. So.
Okay, well, we still have a quorum, and we'll move forward to the meeting without your vote. First item of business this evening under personal appearances is a proclamation honoring Carney's own Dr. David Lear for his outstanding work and contributions to the city of Carney. So if the city administrator can read that proclamation, please.
A proclamation honoring Dr. David Lear for his outstanding work and contribution to the city of Carney. Whereas Dr. David Lear moved to Carney after graduating from the University of Missouri Columbia in 2000 and has owned and operated Long Veterinary Clinic in the city since 2004, providing exceptional veterinary services and care. And whereas, the city of Carney is privileged to have among its residents a veterinarian whose exemplary commitment to animal welfare and extraordinary compassion towards animals has made a profound impact. And whereas, Dr. Lear has generously donated his time, expertise, and resources, ensuring that our canine officers receive the highest quality of medical care, encompassing routine checkups, vaccinations, and emergency treatments. And whereas, Long Veterinary Clinic has formed a vital partnership with the city of Carney, sheltering animals under the city's care during inclement weather and finding animals a loving and caring home when they are not reclaimed by their original owners, demonstrating a profound commitment to animal well-being. And whereas, Dr. Lear has provided invaluable professional consulting and advising services to the city, offering expertise on animal care and assisting in managing animal situations. And whereas, the city of Carney acknowledges with gratitude the immeasurable contributions of Dr. Lear, who has dedicated his time, expertise, and resources to promote the health and well-being of animals in Carney. Now therefore, I, Randy Pogue, Mayor of Carney, do hereby issue this proclamation and bestow the key to the city to honor Dr. David Lear in recognition of his unwavering commitment to the welfare of animals in the city and to extend our heartfelt thanks for his invaluable contributions to our community. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Carney, Missouri, this 5th day of June, 2023.
Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So move. Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Before we give some more, congratulations to Dr. Lear. We do have our canine officers here. I think one of them or both of them have a message as well.
Yes, we just want to say thank you to Dr. Lear. We've had two fairly substantial injuries to our dogs over the last year or so. You already had a spinal injury, I'm sorry, a backbone injury, and then Crash had a spinal injury. They were both out for, Crash was out for eight weeks. You and I talked about the same. We're both still kind of healed from that. The night that Crash got hurt, I can speak for that, Dr. Lear came back to the office. We had him on an X-ray machine. He had me go on page state immediately. I'm sorry Crash doesn't like you. Crash asked to wear a muzzle anytime, but we tried it one time without a muzzle, and it lasted about 30 seconds. Thank you for everything you do. Shots, blood is used to be washed. Definitely grateful, so appreciate it.
Yeah, when they say Dr. Lear donates, he donates all that stuff for all the basic hair for the dog, all the shots, all the Rebecca. I know earlier this year, they were doing contests, and they ended up giving us at least $300 or $400 worth of flea and taking a car for Minnesota free. So they'd save us, the canine unit in Carney is predominantly donation based, and they'd save us $1,000 if I do it now. So there's a very reason why that we're able to keep a dog down the street and keep going program. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Good talking.
Dr. Lear, if you want to come forward, I'd like to present you the original copy of the proclamation and a key to the city of Carney. Thank you. Congratulations. I appreciate our view. Absolutely, yes. Do you have your board?
This is a great honor for me. I wasn't expecting it. Got a call the other night, close to midnight, informing me I better be here. I probably would be on a phone call right now, so. I came to Carney in 2000 and worked up at Holt for three years and then came and talked to Dr. Wong and purchased his clinic. We worked together until 2007. I just want to say, you know, I want to thank several people. God first, family second. I want to thank my coworkers. I want to thank my clients, and I want to thank the community, because without that, none of this would be possible. There are a few people, I've learned over my life, I've gone through a lot, and I've learned in my life that I am the living legacy of many people who are gone, who are deceased, who gave myself, my brothers, a hand up and empowered us to be who we are. And so I try to remember that in my daily activities, and I try to pay that forward, so that hand up. There are a few people in this community who are gone that mean the world to me, and one of them is Jack Barr. And we spent 15 years together, if not more, going to lunch every Wednesday for two hours. And he mentored me on business morals and ethics and, you know, and his dad Sam. So I feel like there are a lot of people in this community who did help me, you know, to be successful, and I always want you guys to know about them. So I appreciate this more than you know. Wasn't expecting it at all, and I will continue to do good works in the memory of those who came before me. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think it's safe to say that a majority of our visitors tonight were here to witness Dr. Lear getting his award and recognition. So unless you would like to stay for the rest of the business conducted this evening, now would be a good time to excuse yourself. Next, under personal appearances, we have with us this evening Mr. Gary Hall on behalf of the Hall family. Mr. Hall?
I'm kind of disappointed they weren't here on my behalf. That's okay. Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and staff. Appreciate the time that you've given me. I hope I got time to go through a few notes.
Absolutely.
My name is Gary, and I'm the oldest son, my voice is quicker, of Jim and Jerry Hall. I graduated from Carney High School in 1966. Dad graduated in 1939. His dad graduated in 1908. And I've lost track of his dad, Joseph Courtney, and his dad, George, who are all Carney people. And as far as I can tell, the Halls have been in the area for nearly 200 years. Mom, Jerry, graduated from Carney High School in 1940. Now, she always considered herself a newcomer to Carney. She wasn't one of the old time families like the Halls. They, their family came from Nashville in 1935, so they were one of the newbies. In other words, I kind of view the Halls and the Dinnies as pillars of this community. Now, Mom and Dad were high school sweethearts. They both worked across the street. For those of you who are, and none of you are old enough to remember, Smith Matthews Drugs, Larry's old enough to remember. They were both soda jerks, and Dad worked in the pharmaceutical areas. And they got married in 1941. Dad went off to World War II, and when he came home, they bought the house at Highway 92 in Prospect, which is the property we're talking about tonight. He bought that property, or they bought that property from my grandfather, George, who bought it in 1923. So the property's been in the, in the hands of the Halls for a long time, was, until it went into the hands of the city. And Mom and Dad. Didn't see it. Come on. Both passed just before their 70th anniversary. Then, in 2012 and 2013, after working with Mayor Dane, who you all remember, I'm sure, and City Administrator Eldridge and David, we were able to put together enough of a plan that looked like a legitimate opportunity to provide a Hall legacy in the form of the park. We gifted the property to the city in 2012. Preliminary plans were drawn up, and they look a lot like the current plans, but not exactly, for what we're calling now Jim and Jerry Hall Park. This is a very comfortable height. I like this. Use this when I get home. Now, we're 10 years later. Improvements have been made. I have to acknowledge the fact that improvements have been made. The house was raised as was planned. It's a safer corner for all the traffic that comes off Prospect and tries to get on 92, that's for sure. Excavation was completed, so the terraces are a lot lower. I used to hate mowing those terraces. But I'd like them a lot better now. Sidewalks were constructed. It's extremely well-maintained. We thought about a temporary sign, you know, a couple of years ago. That, that didn't, that didn't float, so I still acknowledge the progress that has been made. I thank you for that. I know that the use tax was approved, which provided some funding, hopefully, for a park. Grant application is made and in process still. Not all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted yet, I guess, but we're getting closer. Now, back in July of 2021, I sent at least some of you an email expressing my concerns regarding the park's future. Tonight, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for getting it this far. Thanks to Eric for keeping me informed of what's going on. And now I'd like to get it finished. How can I help? Just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And once again, appreciate your family's donation and support to the community and look forward to seeing this project get completed and having you there for ribbon cutting. So we'll keep you posted.
Great. Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? See now if we can entertain approval of the consent agenda as presented?
So much.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to resolutions this evening. We have a resolution presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director. Motion approving Resolution 322023, authorizing a memo of understanding between the city of Carney, Missouri, and Andrew and Nicole Fox of Fox and Fire Barbecue, approving the conditioned use of a temporary structure. Is that typo? Sorry. Continued. Use of a temporary structure at 102 West Orange Street. What do you have for us, David?
Not much more, not much more, because you guys know the activity that goes on up there. A couple of years ago, Andy Fox came before the board and requested a approval of their site. It was good for one year, and they said within two to three years, they hoped to be moved into a permanent structure. That was in '21 with the first request. So yesterday was an extension, or I'm sorry, last year was that first extension, and then they've come this year again for one more extension while they get plans prepared for a permanent structure.
Any questions from the board on the request?
How soon is he talking about having a permit structure? Have you spoke with him on top?
Yeah, Andy did. He's here tonight.
You want me to come over there?
Yeah, go free. Please.
Yeah, so, hi, if you don't know me, I'm Andy at Fox and Fire Barbecue. So, so really, best case scenario, we'd hope to break ground by the end of the year, but that kind of depends on a lot of things in terms of getting our site plan submitted and the review process and all those things. So we would like to move as quickly as we can, but it's kind of, if not by the end of the year, hopefully early next year.
So in the next 12 months?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions for, for staff or the applicant? Right, now if we can entertain a motion to approve Resolution 322032.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 322023.
Well, second.
We can see him now.
Oh, you can see him? Okay.
Yeah, I saw him.
Oh, there he is.
So we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution passes. Congratulations. And thank you to Fox and Fire and Lettermans for the opportunity you guys did to fundraise for the local food pantry. So thanks for being a good community partner.
Absolutely. That's good times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just, my dad, if you haven't eaten there, you need to go eat.
Move on to mayor's communications. A couple of things. If you're looking for some good barbecue this weekend, it's not Fox and Fire quality, but it's good barbecue. Where myself and the Parks Department, we're going to smoke some pork, and we're going to call that Pork for Parks, Eric. We're going to be at the second Saturdays, selling some freight dollars, pulled pork sandwiches, pop water and chips. Our sponsor there is Costantinos Franchiopera Carney, and 100% of the proceeds will be given back to the Carney Parks and Recreation Scholarship Fund, which allows the kids in our community that want to play rec sports, but their family doesn't have the financial means to pay for those rec sports, an opportunity to still be kids and play rec sports with all their friends. So this Saturday, if you're looking for some good barbecue and an opportunity to support the Parks Scholarship Fund, that'd be a good opportunity. And then I was unfortunately absent our, our last meeting. We did have a resident that requested to be on the agenda, and I know he addressed the board regarding backyard chickens. He, since the meeting, reached out to me again and was seeking additional feedback to see if and when the board was going to entertain, making a change of ordinance on that. So what I'm looking for from the board this evening is just a consensus on this topic. If this is something that you would like staff to spend time on or not. If I could just get a consensus, I'm happy to communicate back to the resident. I guess I'll start with Jerry, and we'll go, go all the way around. So Jerry, what's your thoughts?
I'm a country girl. I was raised farm family, and so to me, a chicken is a farm animal, one of the smallest on the farm, but definitely a farm animal. I am really mixed about having them in town, because they do keep the local dogs kind of on edge, barking at the chickens and things like that. So I'm, I am not enthusiastic about having chickens in my neighbor's backyard.
Sure. Dan?
Well, I think there, there may be a place in town for some chickens, but I don't think it's going to be on your standard 75 by 150 lot. And I think a lot of subdivisions where you have HOAs are going to have a problem with that.
Yeah, most of our HOAs would not allow it.
I mean, if you're talking like paddock drive or something where you got two, three acres, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. But if you're in town and you're like my neighbor next door, because we got really small yards, I think it'd be hard to have chickens. So this is where I've always had a kind of dilemma about this, is because of, you know, the size of the yard. So before I say yea or nay, I kind of like know what we're, kind of ordinance we got to say, hey, how big a yard? How far does this have to be from your house? And that kind of thing, because, you know, you don't have that many, that big of yards in town. That's what I'm trying to say. So I'm kind of mixed on how to answer that.
Well, I will put you as a question, where I can tell here from the other two board members, because the last thing I want to do is, is waste staff's time when they've got, you know, other things to work on. Alderman Lehman?
Well, I think, I think we have chickens in town whether we, whether we know it or not. No, we do. My son lived in James Point, and his neighbor had chickens. And like Alderman Holt said, the lots are small. And like Alderman Spencer said, you know, the, the dogs like to, like to bark at them. And so, and then you get to smell. You know, there was, there was times when you went out in my son's backyard and you could smell them. So I think chickens have their place. I'm not sure that chickens have their place in a small neighborhood. You know, if you've got an estate-sized lot or acreage, that might be, that might be a possibility, and I think we need to regulate where the coop would be. You know, the size of the coop, how many chickens they can have. I know Liberty has a regulation, I think Smithville does too, on chickens and where the coops are and, and permits and cost and all that. So if we go in. Yeah, if we go ahead, I think we're going to have to heavily regulate it.
Thank you. Alderman Barker?
I am not opposed to chickens in, in town. I, I think it does need, as Alderman Lehman said, I think it does need to be regulated. I, I agree with Alderman Holt that it does need to have pretty good spacing. I lived in Regency for, Regency Park for a number of years, and the lady behind me had chickens and roosters, and it was a lot going on in my backyard. And, I mean, they weren't, they weren't legal, but they, you know, they, they remained there. So to have, and I don't know what the right number is, four or five chickens in your backyard for egg, to provide eggs for your family, I think is fine. I think we do have to have spacing restrictions. I think we have to regulate the number of chickens, no roosters. I think there has to be permitting fee, an annual fee, whatever, to help, to help pay for the cost of policing that. But I'm not opposed to chickens in, in the city, under the right circumstances.
Yeah, I lived in Regency also, and she's right. There was one particular lady that, and she had three of them.
She lived in my backyard.
And, and those three, and I lived clear down the street, and like Dan was saying, I could even hear them some evenings. And there is an aroma issue, and she had perhaps some handicapped chickens, and they had some physical challenges, and yeah, he walked up to her door.
My, my question also on this is, let's say that we allow the chickens, but now we got dogs barking like crazy, who's not used to having chickens there and, and stuff, and now we got neighbors complaining because dogs are barking all the time.
It's a domino effect.
Yeah, who, who, who do you call down? Do you call down the dog owner? Do you call down the chicken owner? Because chickens are their cousin, the dogs are. I mean, there's, there's different things when we're talking about small, in-town lots.
Well, and that's why I think you can, you can make it.
Yeah.
It needs to be so far away from other houses or whatever.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, you know, like paddock drive, and there's a few down there at Clear Creek and stuff. They got enough room where I don't think it would be an issue, but.
And you're right, the HOAs in a lot of places, the HOAs are going to trump whatever we say.
Yes.
So, but on, on principle, I'm just not opposed to having the chickens, I think.
Chickens can be nice, but I don't want to miss a neighbor.
So what's the consensus on the board? I think it's 50/50 at best. Dan, where are you going to weigh?
Well, if it's regulated to where it's on bigger pieces of property, I don't have a problem with one bigger piece of property. I have a problem with them in town on, you know, cooking kind of lots, like most of the lots in town.
It's a clear direction for staff to look at maybe some of our neighboring cities that have ordinances and regulations for chickens that, I know Smithville's allows only hens, only no roosters, has requirements on their outside home. If you can maybe look at.
25 feet from your property lines.
Yes.
Any direction and.
Looking at maybe some draft ordinances or regulations for the board for future consideration. That would be helpful.
Maybe a limit of three hens.
Chickens do also seem to invite other critters like raccoons and possums into your neighborhoods that you don't normally have.
We're back to the whole domino thing.
Well, they're after the eggs, they're after.
Well, I was going to say, but we have those.
Yeah.
They're after the eggs.
That concludes my mayor's communications. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
The only thing that I have is that the next board meeting will be on Tuesday, June 20th, because of the Juneteenth holiday.
We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Barker?
I have nothing this evening.
Alderman Lehman?
I have nothing, because I couldn't talk longer now.
Well, I just want to say that from my house, which I live about five blocks away from pickleball court, and all I hear is pong, 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 pong. So I know that the pickleball court is getting well-used. I went for a walk by there the other day, and every single court was full. And then they had three people that were actually kind of playing pickleball, if you want to call it, because they were up on the tennis courts, using the pickleball paddle. So it's, our pickleball court is quite a hit at, at this point. If you haven't been down there, it's, it's very beautiful, it's very nice, and it's being well-used. It, it's one thing to spend a lot of money on a project, but it's another to spend the money, then see it being used. That's the whole deal with the splash pad in different places. You hate to spend the money, and then people say, well, it looks nice, but nobody really uses it. This is a facility that is being used. This is a facility that is being used. And I look forward to tournaments sometime that we're gonna get down there. I think this is a real asset to our community, and so far our, our community has shown that they appreciate what, what has been done.
Alderman Spencer?
I'd just like to say congratulations one more time to all of our Carney graduates. It's been a crazy couple of weeks with all the pre-graduation parties, graduation parties, post-graduation parties, lots of out-of-state plates in our community.
Next item is we have an executive session noticed, closed session per RSMO six, ten, oh, two, one. Section one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and the meeting will be adjourned from there. So if we can consider a motion to enter into executive session at seven oh one?
So moved.
I'll second.
If we could roll call vote, please. Pull board.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Votes unanimous. That does conclude our public portion of the meeting. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.